Okay, this is just for the meeting. Take just what you want to say, I guarantee you will see. This, I mean, if you'll like it.
Sure.
All right, everyone.
Hello? All right. I'd like to call this meeting in order. This is the Super School District Board of Education. We're going to be meeting December 17th, 2014, seven o'clock. This meeting has been noticed in the district as well as additional copies recorded by two news graphic and Milwaukee Journal sent home. And I'd like you all to join me in the pledge allegiance to this. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Resolutions and amendments. Everyone? We have a representative from the plus center of Wisconsin to present some of the board conclusions.
Thank you. Saving lives is probably the most valuable volunteer activity any of us can ever do in our lifetime, and Cedarburg High School students do that every time they coordinate a blood drive and give a gift through blood donation. Thanks to student advisors Donna Perth and Lisa Moore for their efforts in coordinating student leaders to a successful blood drive October 6th. Thank you to Principal Nelson for your partnership and commitment to local patient care through Blood Center of Wisconsin. And thank you to the Cedarburg School Board for helping create an environment of giving and for raising children who are so generous to the needs of others. Since Blood Center's first drive here in 1981, Cedarburg High School blood drives have yielded thousands of donations which in turn have helped thousands more. Of all the high school drives at Blood Center of Wisconsin during the month of October, Cedarburg High School was the ultimate share scholarship winner for the highest number of lives saved through blood donation. Personally, I don't think it could have happened to a better school, and that's something we should cheer about. However, I'm biased hold on myself. As each of you here tonight and to all of those who participate in these life-saving efforts move forward in your life, please try to keep in mind that every donation makes a world of difference to a patient in need and to those who love and care for them. Patient need is constant, and donating blood really does save the day. On behalf of Blood Center of Wisconsin, I am pleased to present the ultimate share scholarship to Cedarburg High School. Congratulations, full docs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren, and thank you to Blood Center of Wisconsin for the $250 scholarship. So that's awesome. Thank you.
Thanks. The next item in your packet on the agenda is WIAA communication. In your packet you have a letter that is in draft form. It is potentially in draft form because I wanted to see if there's anything else that you would like to add to the letter. This is a letter from the school district, specifically the school board, to WIAA for the benefit of the audience. WIAA has initiated, for the first time in probably 20-plus years, a consideration of the alignment of five conferences in schools within those five conferences in our region. And we would like to express to the WIAA our reaction to the initial proposal that WIAA shared with that letter collectors. I will tell you that I think we're up to the fifth or sixth iteration of conference possible schedules, so this is a moving target. But the goal of this communication is to be very pointed in sharing with WIAA the board's perspective on what conference realignment could or should look like, with our first reference being no change. No change. The only other footnote to this particular item is that this was initiated by four schools, school districts, that felt that their football program needed to have a different model of competition so that they could somehow reach some postseason schedule, which many of the school districts understand, and there is precedent in WIAA actually in the last year where there have been football-only conferences that have been established, which is in history of WIAA is really quite unique. So it is possible that there could be a football-only conference come out of these conversations. But we'll also tell you that there is no queue process other than to announce a final recommendation is made by the district staff of WIAA to share directly with the board directors of WIAA the perspective on that recommendation, and we will not receive that recommendation in advance, I'm told. So that's why I thought it would be important to make sure that the sentiment of the district is conveyed, and we will, Jeff, Dave, and I will make sure that that message is conveyed to the appropriate parties. So any suggestions for changes, improvements to this letter?
I think it's well done, especially given the fact of how well our team travels to away, have our kids driving back to our school premises. Not in any way fair to me.
Yeah, the initial proposal for the benefit of the audience was to to our locations in a new conference, Hoover, could have been Beaver Dam and Water Town, which is unbelievable. So we have to make sure that we cover that. So any other suggestions? Otherwise, I will send this along.
I'd say I think it's really important to do this and take the right steps because sit quietly, unless the dugout, I do this would be a big mistake. We all regret it, we all know that when you see this conference lineup, and we need to point out how flawed it is, and it's just not logical for the initial drafts at least. So I think it's important to point out on the pledge of allegiance.
I like a lot, I think though, and Jeff, maybe you can answer this, we have a large amount of athletic programs compared to other schools out there. So in this new conference, this new alignment, will that mirror what we have? I mean, do these other schools have, you know, now boys volleyball? Do they have boys and girls golf? Do they have the same programs? Because now we could be actually, you know, decreasing our student involvement or maybe play out of our conference, you know? Actually, we're gonna have to play the people we always had in some of those circumstances. So I'd kind of like you to somehow capture that. Is that accurate in your mind? I mean, if there's some sports that we have that these other districts want or more germaines or mature or anything like that?
Yes, yeah, we definitely capture that. WIAA is a very powerful organization who has its own priorities unfortunately, but the more things we can say that would be, you know, positive for us in that sense, I think would be as good. We haven't talked about that suggestion for the ideas, because we are fortunate that, you know, we're similar size and similar demographics and similar concepts in that sense, because we offer all WIAA sports now, all WIAA sports that are approved, we offer. There are many high schools that are like that. The problem is, some of those schools that do offer it are quite a bit away from us, so we're really trying to push that proximity and the travel piece. That's why the football-only conference, at least that's only a Friday night, it may be three to four games max, and kids getting, you know, leaving a game at 10:00 at the math pad. Ideally, we'd love it in status quo, it doesn't sound like that as an option, but we will see. But I think that's something we definitely believe.
What we'll do is take a look at the comparability, interest in number of sports, girls and boys, and if it'd be appropriate to make that statement, well, if it really doesn't affect the potential of that, we will leave that out.
Yeah, absolutely.
Joining me, so WIAA accurately or clear satisfaction, is the rationale for this?
The rationale was two sentences, and it was four schools, three of our schools, they want their football program in Water Town.
Does Jeff, do you think that's what it is? That's not a pretext or anything?
No, it's actually, you have not only schools in our conference, but there's also schools in other conferences that want to move. So when you aren't experiencing success, then everyone wants to move to another conference in the hopes that they'll be more successful there. And so WIAA has taken, they've taken a couple of different steps to that. One is just saying we're into realignment, and you just like it, and that's what it's gonna be, or we'll give you an opportunity to share what you think, and then we'll give you what you want, and we'll give you something that you like it.
And I recall the three, four, Graffin, Walker Thuren.
For Washington.
And Nicolet. Because they played football this year, they want to get back in, but they want to play a different model.
And the issue is that football's the only sport that isn't all schools make the playoffs. So you have to have a winning record. So that's why no one really complains about, we're Division II in basketball, and maybe Graffin's Division III in basketball, but they don't mind competing against us or being against Homestead or Germantown in Division One, because they can still make the playoffs and still, they might have a poor record but have a great Division III team and make it through, whereas in basketball, it's football, if you don't have a 500 record in your conference, you can't make the playoffs. So that's, football really, really is driving this.
So this will be effective immediately this next fall?
Talking with that sheet of time, that it'd be unlikely for the 15-16 year, and that was simply due to scheduling now for next year and the time, the window of approval, the approval process that WIAA has, that it would be late in spring before they did, at the earliest if they were making a decision, and it would be way too late for a default court, so they would not make a season change in many of the questions. So likelihood is very low that it would be, you know, go to next year.
You know, and based on the travel time, how much is it gonna take kids away from doing their academics? We might be asking for a realignment just like these other schools because of lack of participation, because parents are gonna let their kids play these sports, they're taking them away from their academics and far out, and so we really don't know that we'll be next in line.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at, is if we can show them that this, the alignment isn't going to achieve their desired goal, I think that it's gonna cause more problems.
Even budgetary issues, transportation costs, and things that are significantly different. You know, we just have a line item on there, but it's a significant impact on budgets when everybody's trying to do the most you can with, you know, dollars you have, they have to spend a significant amount more just because, you know, four teams, one football team, like, doesn't really seem logical. It's illogical, I suppose. Well, I remember the proposed alignment, we're really the school that's affected the most, because when you look at Milwaukee Show schools, they don't have quite a distance between those two schools, we've got a distance going to both of those schools. So we seem to be kind of on the short end of that system.
That is a correct, yeah, that is a correct observation.
Right.
So that's why, you know, maybe it's good for us to make a very firm statement. So I will do that research, and then we'll make changes, afford the changes pending, otherwise I'll send it on behalf of the board. Keep you apprised of the process and any conversations that are occurring and/or any potential alignment that appears to be aligned that is supposed to be drafted for, just so that you're aware of when we make a decision. Appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
The next item is a proclamation regarding school crossing guard recognition. This is from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, proclamation whereas Wisconsin adult school crossing guards provide an invaluable service in helping to ensure the safe passage of our youngest, most vulnerable pedestrians, children walking between home and school, and whereas adult school crossing guards typically serve with a dedication that discounts the rakers of the harsh weather, split shifts, and heavy traffic, and whereas for more than five decades, adult school crossing guards have served communities across Wisconsin, and that service has helped to drive down the rates of young pedestrian deaths and injuries despite increases in traffic volume, and whereas adult school crossing guards added the effectiveness of the student safety patrol, members with whom they swap and serve and whose activities they help direct, and whereas adult school crossing guards help reinforcing the minds of young people, they assist the importance of traffic hazard identification and straight, safe street crossing behavior. Therefore, we have resolved that January 12th through 16th, 2015, be declared adult school crossing guard recognition in the state of Wisconsin. This is signed by Superintendent of Public Construction, Dr. Tony Hevers.
All right, item five.
In your packet, minutes included for November 19th, budget findings, financial information if you have questions. I'd like to ask Conrad, would please to read in the minutes the first one.
Thank you. We have a few of the usual comings and goings of support staff. I don't want to spend this time on those because we had a couple of retirement requests. One of them for Susan Baumann, fifth grade teacher at Orson, and also PJ Sanders, our West Long principal, who is here this evening, and I certainly would want to express on behalf of the administrative team our appreciation for all of his years of service to the district. He's done an amazing, amazing job. We're happy for him that he's reached his career, but bittersweet to see him go, and we're all a little bit jealous and excited for him, but certainly a pretty huge milestone. We bring that forward to you this evening with that little bit of reservation and hesitation at the same time wishing him all the best. So we ask you to approve both of those retirement requests.
So moved.
Second. Before you take action, I want to let you know that I did call WRS Target System and told them that PJ had made a mistake on his application, he was only 39 years old. So he really couldn't retire, so he paid for it, he just hoped for it. We're going to miss PJ tremendously, and I will, and just really appreciate what not only he's bought to the district, the administrative team, West Long specifically, parents, but the students, year after year after year, and the embrace that he's made on their hearts and their minds, and he will be significantly missed by all of us, and wish him the best. It's a situation of great for him, but very sad for us, but very happy, very happy for him. We have already, on his behalf, filled out subsidy teaching applications, we have some in our district, because we need all of these scholarships. And, but it's, it's been really wonderful for me, and I know for all of us, it's become the happiness of searching, just the enjoyment of seeing a professional who cares deeply for kids, and be able to look on the side of such a, such a high-quality person. So thank you, PJ, for everything.
I agree, PJ, you know, we all know that PJ's school was the first school to have been a school in Cedarburg, so, but, you know, I, just, everything you've done at that school, you know, the parents love it, teachers love it, kids love it, we, you know, we recently had people that, you know, were, we had to move them because of client sizes, you know, and move them away from your school, and people actually bought homes, sold their homes, and, well, bought homes in your area without selling their homes. I've done that before, that's not a good idea. And it didn't just happen once, it happened several times, so that's quite a testament to you and the pride that you've created there. And, you know, can't thank you enough for your board and parents, and you set quite a high standard, so sincerely appreciate it.
The fessence of Wisconsin are gonna get a little nervous. I'll be out later.
And certainly, I'd like to add a little bit to what Chris was saying, that West Long was the school I grew up going to, so I've always been very impressed with the changes you've made and the new things you want to try out there. It's always neat to look from afar at the things we've accomplished at West Long, so thank you very much for all of your time in the district. Appreciate it. Yeah, I have three kids, one through West Long, and my wife was very involved for a few years as well, and she just very much appreciated working with you, would come home and just, you know, tell me about, obviously what a pleasure it was, and what a heart she had for, you know, the parents and the kids, and obviously your staff. And I had teachers who were telling me, it's just like no other place I've ever been because of your leadership, so we just really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Can't stand.
All right. Well, I have a motion in the second, assuming that was a joke. All those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, PJ.
Thank you.
All right. Reports and recommendations activated.
First item, I think we're in a line here. Recommend the Board of Education accept a $500 donation from LS Research to be used by Cedarburg High School Engineering Club for the robotics program. Move to approve, second?
Motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries.
Recommend the Board of Education accept a $500 donation from Mance Automation to be used by Cedarburg High School's Engineering Club for robotics program. Move to approve, second?
Motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries.
Recommend the Board of Education accept a donation of $2,005 from Fine Arts Boosters to be used by Cedarburg High School Art Department for the civic monitor. Move to approve, second?
Motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries.
Recommend the Board of Education accept a donation of $500 from Fine Arts Boosters to be used by Cedarburg High School Art Department for department needs. Move to approve, second?
Motion aye. All those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries.
Recommend the Board of Education accept a $500 donation from Fine Arts Boosters to be used by Cedarburg High School Vocal Music Department for department needs. Move to approve, second?
All those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries.
Recommend the Board of Education accept a donation of $500 from Joan Perkett to be used by Cedarburg High School Vocal Music Department for establishing the company's training program for CHS piano students. Move to approve, second?
All those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries.
Recommend the Board of Education accept a donation of $2,875 from CAPCO to be used by Webster Transitional School for the seventh grade youth courage retreat in February 2015. Move to approve, second?
All those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries.
Recommend the Board of Education accept a donation of $500 from Mel's Fagros to be used by Webster Transitional School for the vestibule program. Move to approve, second?
All those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries.
Recommend the Board of Education accept a donation of $500 from North Webster Mutual Foundation in honor of Mr. Joseph Lankowski, who volunteered eight hours of time for Cedarburg High School Engineering Club. Move to approve, second?
All those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries.
Recommend the Board of Education accept $850 donation from Tel Smith to be used by Cedarburg High School Engineering Club for the robotics program. Move to approve, second?
All those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries.
Recommend the Board of Education accept the $2,500 grant from the SFM Mutual Insurance Company to be used by Cedarburg High School School District for safety initiatives. Move to approve, second?
All those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries.
Recommend the Board of Education accept the $2,500 grant from the SFM Mutual Insurance Company to be used by Cedarburg High School Engineering Club for the robotics program. Move to approve, second?
All those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries.
Recommend the Board of Education accept the $2,500 grant from North Webster Mutual Foundation in honor of Mr. Joseph Lankowski, who volunteered eight hours of time for Cedarburg High School Engineering Club. Move to approve, second?
All those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries.
Recommend the Board of Education accept the $500 grant from the North Webster Mutual Foundation in honor of Mr. Joseph Lankowski, who volunteered eight hours of time for Cedarburg High School Engineering Club. Move to approve, second?
All those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries.
Recommend the Board of Education accept the $850 donation from Tel Smith to be used by Cedarburg High School Engineering Club for the robotics program. Move to approve, second?
All those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries.
Recommend the Board of Education accept the $2,500 grant from the SFM Mutual Insurance Company to be used by Cedarburg High School School District for safety initiatives. Move to approve, second?
All those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries. And that is, I don't need to go through those so quickly, but there's just so many, it's so nice to be a district where we're taking all these donations, it's fantastic.
I was including that, because we were, it was over $700 in one of the people's donations. I mean, places to do fundraising is to try to, you know, try it for two months and do this, and people just donating that money on a monthly basis is really, I really wanted to thank our community, our school, so I thank all those people, absolutely.
Oh, really, I really do appreciate it. Hopefully we'll get to see that robot again.
That's right. All right, item N, Kerry.
In your package, you received the audited financial statements and audit letter for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014. I'd like to introduce Kerry Ginn from our audit firm, Riley Penner in Benton, and she's the partner assigned to our account, and she will do an overview of the audited statements for you.
Hello, Kerry. The financial statements you have, the first two pages are what we call our auditors' report. And what we issued this year is an unmodified opinion, and what that means is that we're saying the financial statements aren't very presented, so that would be the kind of opinion that you would be looking for from us. For some financial results for the general fund, you ended the year with an increase in your fund balance of $120,000. You ended with fund balances in the general fund, there was non-spendable of $69,000, most of this due to some prepaid expenses at the end of the year. There is a committed fund balance for $40,000, and then unassigned fund balance of $7,264,000. If you compare to your budget for the year in Fund 10, which is your general fund, you expended 99% of what you had budgeted, and you received 100% of what you budgeted. If you take Fund 27 or your special education fund, you expended 95% of what was budgeted and also received 95%. If you're looking for which individual functions might be over budget, that's on page 31, there's a table that details that out for you. For your debt activity during the year, you paid down one lane $580,000 on your loan obligation debt, leaving a balance at the end of the year of $13,240,000, and you paid down $125,000 on your notes, leaving a balance on the low of $265,000. There's also liability recorded for your OPEB at the end of the year, the amount accrued was $219,000, but the full actuarially determined liability is actually $9,173,000, so there's a pretty big gap between those two, it's because of the way that GAAS requires us to calculate what to be recorded each year. There's also a stipend liability, what has been recorded for that is $121,000, but the full actuarially determined liability is $825,000. There's actually a new GAAS coming out next year that's gonna require that full amount of the stipend to be accrued next year, so that full $825,000 will be showing up as a liability next year. And I've also gone through and calculated some quick ratios for you that I will go over. The first one is your current ratio compares your current assets to your current liabilities. It came out to 2.78. What this means is that you currently have current assets that are 2.78 times greater than what your current liabilities are, which is the same as it was last year. And then you can do a quick ratio, which is actually comparing current liabilities to just the cash and investments. That came out to 1.32. What this means is that your cash and investments 1.32 times greater than your current liabilities, which is pretty close to what it was last year, last year was 1.3. There's a debt-to-asset ratio, yours is 38%. What this means is that 38% of the district assets are financed with debt. This decreased from 42% in the prior year. And then there's debt-to-net position ratio, which for you is 61. What this means is for every dollar of resources that you have available to you, you owe 61 cents, this decreased from 71 cents last year. These two decreasing is mainly due to paying down debt and not taking out any new debt. On the annual cost per pupil, in 2014 it was $12,340, which is an increase per student of $49.28 from the year before, and your general state aid per pupil is $3,032, which is a decrease of about $57 per student from the prior year. I also have a letter, but I'll stop and see if we have any questions on that. Um, I also have a letter, but I'll stop and see if we have any questions on the financial statements before I go through the letter. Nope, okay. Then there's also a letter that we have to issue each year. Um, first page, you're probably pretty used to. It's the details of what significant deficiencies and material weaknesses are, the definitions, um, so the different internal control deficiencies that you can have. Uh, we note down there that we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses. That's down in the third paragraph. At the bottom of the page, we have, uh, a heading for other matters. All the items listed are not deficiencies or weaknesses. They're just some other matters that we came across or needed to be put in the letter. Um, the first one, you are probably used to seeing also. We just note that the district operates its accounting and reporting with a limited number of individuals, which precludes a proper segregation of duties. Uh, our most effective control is knowledge and monitoring of matters related to financial affairs. The only real way to get rid of that is hire a bunch of extra people, which doesn't make sense. On the second page, we have a comment about the student activity counts. A number of years ago, DEEPAT issued guidelines on what should be in the Student Activity Fund or Fund 60, and what is actually district activity and therefore should be in one of the other funds. Examples of district activity funds that would be in Fund 10 are things like athletics, music concerts, school plays, and field trips. Uh, we suggest the district review its Fund 60 activities and evaluate if any would be more properly classified as a district activity and out of the Fund 60. Uh, the next note is really just a reminder that we like to put in there that you need to have a new actuarial report as of July 1st, 2015. And the rest of the letter is just standard things we have to make a little aware of each year. Um, no new accounting policies, none changed during the year. The most sensitive estimates in the financial statements are the estimate of fixed assets, which are based on a third-party appraisal, and the estimate of the OPEB and pension liabilities, which are based on an actuarial appraisal. No significant difficulties in completing the audit. No incorrect financial statements, misstatements, no disagreements of management, and no other findings or issues to make you worry. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I guess in overall, sort of debt service and so forth, would you say that this year overlasts, we've improved?
Right. And it'll keep, as long as you're paying down debt and not taking on new debt, it's gonna keep driving.
And then, um, I don't have any more questions for you, anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Um, Karen, I'm interested in wanting the, uh, the Fund 10, the excess of actual expenditures over budget. What drives those numbers typically? Is that just things in our budget?
Mostly, it's our inventory at the end of the year, and then just different expenses we have from here that don't get changed in our plans.
Mm-hmm.
All the change.
And then where does that money go then? Is that from the fund balance? I just read it. All right. That's all I have. Anyone, uh, like to make a motion to accept the financial on record?
Motion to accept the audit report?
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, all those. Shari, love. Well, thank you, Karen. Great having you here. All right, item N, Todd.
Thank you. This evening, um, I have before you the, uh, second reading, uh, on the old courses for the 2015-16 school year. Uh, we presented these courses at the November 19th Committee on the Whole. Uh, there were teachers present at that time to provide explanation and also clear the questions from all the board members. Um, I thought the teachers did a thorough job of explaining why they changed the necessary, um, and, uh, or additions, I should say. Uh, it certainly was in the spirit of, uh, adjusting our student needs and, um, thinking about all that Dr. Levenson was working on with the, uh, submission statement of the district. Um, certainly, the post course courses aligned very well with students pursuing their dreams and allowing them that opportunity. So, before I do, you have, um, the recommendation for the final approval for the highest economics and finance course, computer science and software engineering, that should say zoology and botany there, not biology, uh, AP world history, and, uh, the Spanish five course. So, we're asking, uh, the board at this time to include those courses. I will just note that there were some, uh, questions regarding the AP world history course and materials that were, um, being suggested for use throughout that course. And, um, the current textbook that's being proposed is, um, circulated through the board. Um, I think it's here this evening, and we have it, uh, on the agenda for the, uh...
Our day.
We have it on the agenda for the Kirk and Committee on the Board on February 4th to, to make a determination on materials. Um, the material selection should not, um, hold up the, the course proposal. When it comes to bringing along more materials, it'd be, um, we're just beginning the course approval this evening, so, um, we may have to add on it for the, uh, publication of the high school, uh, course selection.
All right, so, do you have any thoughts on it after, uh...
Well, we voted on it once before. Um, so, I guess I would move to approve, uh, as listed. Just with the caveat that we're still reviewing the AP world history, uh, materials.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Just a second portion to that on the agenda. You note that there's, um, a request for the board to consider either the first reading and/or approval of name changes to two choir courses. I, um, shared this with Dr. Levenson, and, um, I believe you should see if it was appropriate just to add this in the back, that we are, um, adjusting some of the, uh, course additions tonight in anticipation of nicely course guide being ready for publication when we come back from break. And there are two items that we're asking the board to consider this evening. Um, you can see the background information on those items. Um, it's, in essence, a course change and a pass out, a name change, I should say, and a pass out what the post course guide, um, page would look like, uh, for the music department. So, the high school music department is requesting a name change for two courses to better reflect our current programming. The name changes are to change Vocal Jazz Ensemble to Bella Voce, and the Chamber Singers, uh, becomes a acapella choir. Uh, over the years, there's been systemic imbalance in voice types, which has impacted our ability to write acapella ensembles. Uh, the name change would better define our current realities and how the specific talents or, uh, archities can be targeted in the dance. Um, the Bella Voce class will encompass all the components of the, uh, former Vocal Jazz Ensemble with a target emphasis on shrivel voices. And the A Acapella Choir is virtually the same as the Chamber Singers with a more defined exploration of certain types of music. On the flip side of the proposal of 15-16, uh, course outline, you can see that there's actually, um, the description of the courses as they appear in the high school course deck. Victoria was hoping to be here this evening. She is in the middle of, um, rehearsal, uh, this evening, and, um, she, uh, said she may or may not be here. And then, uh, all things were, were going, um, so, um, she gave me the notes and, uh...
Otherwise, I met with her, I can trust it.
Sure, please.
I met with Victoria, because it went to the FAB board, has some discussion on it, and there was some concerns due to the fact that going to Bella Voce, um, choir, there's gonna be less opportunity at the highest level of choirs for male voices. And she explained to me that this is driven by the fact that currently, I believe, there are seven male voices in all of their choirs. Um, there's been a great reduction in, in males staying in the vocal program. So, this would give her the opportunity to better use the resources she have of more female voices. Since, and I did hear from a parent though, that there is a large group of male voices coming up from Webster. They had a specific seventh grade group that was an all-male group. So, the thought would be that if that continues and they continue the vocal music program, that there could always be a switch back at a later date, um, to give that extra opportunity. Um, you may hear from some parents who are disappointed, because as a parent of a former Vocal Jazz and a, um, male member and a daughter that that was a goal of hers at high school, you will have some historic looking at it, but it's just too tough for her to currently do. Uh, when you look at the after-hour choir that she just had at the Christmas concert, I was surprised that there was only one bass voice that would be left after the semester break, because one's going overseas. So, the entire choir, there is one bass voice in that entire choir. So, it's gonna make it very difficult, um, for her with that number of male students to be able to, to make it work.
So, would it say it's enrollment or anything?
Uh, absolutely. It's just looking at, there's not... And she was concerned, because she said the lack, uh, the lack of the, um, continuity at Webster. She thinks, you know, the music, Vocal Music Department has, has caused some of that. Um, you know, it's also a, a case of our band is getting, growing and growing and getting bigger, and, you know, kids are choosing one or the other. So, I think we're losing some, some vocal people there, too. But it doesn't prevent us, you know, she sees a switch going back, to come back and say, "You know what, I'm gonna go back to what I had before." This will give an opportunity for female voices, though, for a lot more of them to take it to a higher level than they have in the past, because it was a limited number of spots in the Vocal Jazz.
What I don't get is why we can't just have, you know, I don't know, something that just is, uh, just leave the names and change the program based on who's in it? I mean, why we have, it seems like this is kinda handcuffing us to only do one thing. I would think we want, because it's so dynamic and because there's people, like Rick said, you know, coming up from Webster's and boys, why not have a course listing that's more general, that is more fluid?
It'd be, Chris, it'd be confusing to the students when they're looking at it, because currently, everybody knows that Vocal Jazz is, that's a group of, I believe, there's three, three tenors, three bass, four altos, and four sopranos. Um, if you look at Bella Voce, that is gonna be, if you look down at the bottom, the SS, AA, that's first and second soprano, and first and second alto voices. It's to give the kids to understand what's gonna be there. There are no male, no voices in that choir. So, it's to spell it out so that they're, have a good understanding of what they're doing when they're still in their classes.
Mm-hmm. Well, as long as we can, you know, change it like she said, then...
That would be my suggestion, if that comes to... And Shari texted me, she was going, "Diana is sick today." So, that's why, so she can't step away, because all of this is her purpose. So, that's why you're trying to...
From my perspective, we certainly know her heart is in the right place. She's doing what she's supposed to do in the music department, so I totally agree. Yes, to say, okay, teachers think they know what they're doing, thus...
It does currently reflect, we can practice how it's shaping up, but the students who are currently enrolled in the program, so, um, echo what you said. It's, over the years, as the numbers, uh, increase and, you know, voices increase, there's certainly some opportunities for them to, even changes opportunities for them to succeed in those. And nothing prevents them from taking any of these, not only their voice.
I mean, I tend to, so, that's a most of the minds, so... I, I agree, uh, and yet I, uh, also, uh, relate to what Chris was saying, that it seems like, uh, we change it based on the, uh, student voices that are coming through the system, and, you know, we could be changing this course every year, every two years, or wherever else, and maybe that's appropriate, but it seems...
This is the first time it's been needed. It's never come to this where they get that few of male voices. And my biggest concern, when I met with her, sorry to interrupt, but my, my biggest was that we still gave the male voices other opportunities through the acapella choir. They still have, she's gonna change that from being a chamber group to an acapella group, so that it's kinda picking up some of the things Vocal Jazz had and did, so that she can have different styles of music and that, to still give the male voices that opportunity. And I know during resource period next year, she's gonna offer, you know, she said that to you right there, she's gonna offer an optional thing for male voices as well, to try and get more guys interested in the program. Maybe you gotta choose them as a class choice, but to give them an opportunity, sort of like the after-hours choir, you know, it'd be something to do. It was interesting, there weren't any, uh, Jeff, it's not here, but Jeff's son, who doesn't sing, sang with the after-hour choir, and, um, so it was... There's only, that those kinda kids... There was kids who just, it wasn't what they normally do, it doesn't fit in their class schedule, but they wanted to turn it into...
And, you know, if they need these voices, they should ask you and me, you know?
I sang with the after-hours choir.
It's more like a parvorette vortex. I'm not going there with you, Chris.
If she does it next year, you should sign up, it's, it, it really is, it's a great opportunity, too, because I was off during the day, so I came into the classroom, and I got to spend time meeting some other kids and hearing their, you know, things they liked, things they didn't like, in a different setting than, so it was, it was, it was a nice experience.
All right.
Does she, do you want action on this, or you can get it into the vocal?
If possible, that would be, I can, yes.
So, someone else has to make this motion, because I still have broken deep...
I will, I will vote, uh, the first reading, and I agree with this.
I'll second that. Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries unanimously.
Can we just note in there that we would hope that if the voices change, we're able to, to change the name of the choir back and give them that opportunity? And then we discussed it, but...
Do you have some little technology or motion?
Could we just get that in?
I agree.
All right, can you add that in there? All right, excellent. There we go. Yeah, we do actually, too. All those in favor of the end of the motions? Aye. Against, motion carries unanimously. All right, item O. Karen?
I believe it was in October, we talked very briefly about this at, um, our PNF meeting. It is recommended the Board of Education extend the British, um, British World Crown Lease for an additional year. Here would be an annual increase. The annual rate we, we receive is $1,620 or $81 in a year. Um, we do have another farmer that's expressing interest, um, like you said, we said years ago, in talking about the bits, so I'll bring the information to the plan forward early this year.
And then, okay, there's a 98 term clause in here.
Correct, and, and the, and the subleasing, we have to even, a great request.
All right.
If motion, I'll move to approve of this.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries unanimously. Do you, the calendar or contract?
Before you, you have a sample of the 2015-16 calendar, very similar to the one that we presented to the board last month, but there was that one slight change moving a professional development day, um, just, uh, to a Monday, February 19th. Other than that, all the questions that we had been addressed, we'll have sufficient cushion as far as the hours of instruction, we'll be able to cancel the customary maximum of five days and still have the hours that we need. We call a state law requires a minimal 180 days of classes. Uh, so, we were gonna take advantage of that and have 178 days, but we actually still will have more hours of instruction, because some state changes, everything's taking, at the elementary, not so much elementary, but the high school in particular. So, we ask for that calendar as we approved this evening.
I like, uh, I like the zero. I just asked, are there any half-days? I like that answer, just to make you sure, but I appreciate that.
Connor, Connor, you said 19th of February, it's 29th?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna... My, my bad.
How many did it?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I have just one question. Uh, with regard to weather days, whatever else, how does that impact what we're doing here?
This calendar is designed so that if we have, uh, the state recommends five days cushion, so if you cancel the five days, you still get the hours of instruction that are required. We actually are slightly over that. We probably have six canceled days and still have the hours of instruction, but let's hope we don't get to that point.
Sure.
But this, um, we actually have more cushion in this calendar than we've ever had in the eight years I've been here, primarily because of the elimination of the half-days. That really picks up a lot of time, um, by getting those days full. And, um, the counting of the actual hours of instruction includes the bell-to-bell from the beginning of the bell, that the students start to the end of the day, minus the lunch period and a passing time that's connected to lunch. So, all the rest of the time is how you count the hours of instruction over the course of the year.
So, the bottom line is there's flexibility built into the weather?
Absolutely. Okay, we're way over the requirements.
Thank you, Connor.
Sure.
I would like to also throw out, I had some questions on this, um, couple of...
I would like to also throw out that I had some questions on this, a couple of different perspectives. One response, and I'm glad to see that half days are gone because we all bludgeoned up the goals. Out there aren't the most productive days for kids. I still, and I got an email, I think that Jeff had created initially, or Connor reported on me, regarding the number of hours in the classroom during, and while technically there's, I don't remember exactly, maybe six less hours of class time, if you add that prep during, beginning, there's 48 hours more. So we added time to our school day by doing this. I didn't figure out why, but I assume it's like passing time and things like that, that you're not leaving going always wasting. So that was one thing I'd like us to always keep considering is not to be focused on what the old contracts always said for the number of hours, the number of days per year in the contracts, because we don't have to do that now. We can do what's best for kids, and I think this is a step in the right direction. But I always keep asking, if you think you need more days, add to the calendar to not think, oh my God, we can't go there. Because I think as a board, we have to look at those types of options that are out there. We aren't restricted like we used to be in the old days to have to negotiate an extra day or anything like that. If we denied it, we should have that possibility to do that. I think it was a good step, a good change.
We appreciate that.
Good observation, Connor.
I have a motion. All right, motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries the matter into session. All right. I have a few, Connor.
Before you, as a draft of open enrollment policies, we're going to bring this to you this evening for the first reading, so that we can bring to you for a final reading at the January meeting, which is when we have to determine the open enrollment seats for next year. On a number of appeals this year, the DDI informed us of certain issues that they had with how we were handling open enrollment. And they made very clear that we had to adjust our policies to make sure that we could, they could rule in our favor for appeals that may occur subsequently. So we've talked with Neola, that's the firm that will be going with all of our policies moving forward. This is their recommended policy, so they had this reviewed by Davis and Kielthow already, and so they're very familiar with the expectations of the state when it comes to the open enrollment legislation. So we would like to have this first reading taken care of this evening, so that at the January meeting, we can do the second reading and get that approved. And then when we make our seats available, we actually literally use this policy as part of the appeal process. We even give it to the DDI and say, here's why we based the decision on how we made it. Here's our policy that supports our rationale for the seats that we determined and how the seats were made available. And it all goes together. We'll also most likely bring you an updated class size policy at the January meeting, and we'll probably have to wait the first reading at that time to get these all in. It's not going to change the numbers for our class size, but we do, based on the DDI's feedback, we think there's a better way to calculate that using an average class size across the district. And when you think about the open enrollment seats, we don't have to guarantee a non-resident student a slot at a school. They're just giving a slot in the district. And so it makes more sense to do an average across than all the class levels in a certain grade than to just have a class size that's kind of narrow to specific classes. It's just, and it's also just not a real good way to do it across the district, if you think about it. If you had one class out of their grade that was a little high, obviously you can't have a teacher for that. It would upset the balance the other way. So we're going to tweak that policy at the January meeting as well. Any questions?
I have just a quick question. I think it was on page three, the top of it. And just the concept of, I guess, just to understand, it sounds like the cat is that non-resident students who are attending your school are kind of grandfathered in. Once they're there, they're there forever. So kindergarten, we have an opening in kindergarten, and they come in to our district. And by fourth grade, let's say it's a new subdivision is being built, which is kind of going on, and there's suddenly lots of new fourth graders coming in. That student's automatically in, no matter what. The class size increases, it looks like.
Once they're accepted in the program, they stay in the program, and so you can, you can make them reapply at one time in their career. So you can either do it when they're moving from elementary to middle or from middle to high. And there is one time in the during process that you could say, you've got to reapply. At that point, if space was an issue, you could deny students that even had been in the system for many years. So if that, yeah, we're not changing that. If you think about it for the sake of the kids and continuity, that would really, that's tough for family when you think, okay, I got into the district, I've been here, and now all of a sudden I can't go anymore. You don't want to do that. You really try to be able to let them keep going, but there are times that it could happen and if the class size is an issue and you serve resident district, resident kids first.
But does it, does it guarantee a school?
No. Open enrollment never guarantees a school.
Like one of our address schools.
Right. Just one of them.
And again, it's the same thing continuity wise. Once they're in the system, you hate to make them move, and we tried to avoid that, but we had to do that for the sake of trying to have balanced class sizes.
And so my thought, my look at that was just based on that concept, and it makes sense. But I think we would want to keep that numbers, our average numbers, a little down the lower end because we do have some divisions that are getting developed now. And to, also as they get developed, you know, they commit a kindergarten by fourth grade, there might be a little bit of an issue.
Absolutely. And every year you get to set the open enrollment seats. So any given year, you can decide, we can't take any at that level. So we're never locked in beyond the single year that you set the seats for the following year. So that usually will address that because it's rare that you see a huge change in one year. It can happen.
Yeah, people, my, it could happen when people move in.
Things do happen.
Coming from a different area, not wherever their kids are, they absolutely do.
Yep. And we'll keep that in mind at the January, when we propose the seats for next year.
Sure.
But this is really centered for that. This is just making sure that our policy is the right wording so that when somebody does appeal a decision to deny a seat, we don't have to have to take them because our policy wasn't worked properly.
I just have a curiosity. I know we're not going to take action on this, because we want to bundle it. How was it working with the firm that we contracted with? I mean, it was a kind of like, we had a problem here and it was seamless. It was worth it. It was...
It's going really well. Their policies are in great shape. They've already been vetted. They've been looked at by attorneys. It's tedious.
So this saves us a lot of time. I mean, like going with them, right?
It'll save us time in the long run.
Yeah.
Right now, it's costing us a lot of time.
Yeah, yeah.
The initial investment will be worth it.
Right. But if we were in a situation where DDI says you have to change this, if we did not have that resource, it would have taken longer.
You have attorney fees.
I don't, in some cases, maybe, Chris. The open enrollment statutes have been around every one time and they're pretty clear. Many of us have experience with this. I don't think it would have taken us too much in this specific case, if this policy fixed. But yes, in other cases, no question having Neola at our access would really be helpful and much more efficient. And cost effective, because we probably need to fix all the attorneys for this one, but for other ones, absolutely. I'd be more worried honestly about the cost than I would get to honor.
Yeah. Okay. Appreciate it. So next month, huh?
Yes, we'll bring this for final approval. I'm not exactly sure if they're, you do it, I mean, actually haven't just approved a first reading typically. We haven't done policies in a while, so I'm not familiar. Again, the policy says we have to do two readings, so I don't know how to officially denote, did a first reading? If there isn't any action?
The second one, she puts it on the agenda, second reading.
Okay, that's a note, right? Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
Do you think the open enrollment parents understand, or is pointing at it, doesn't guarantee a school?
We are actually putting that into the letter. I think we might have got that in last year, didn't we?
It was a confusion.
We put it right in the letters to emphasize it, and we even said that after we were in. You're not guaranteed a spot at that training school forever.
So we need to really make sure they know.
It's only makes sense. It's only fair to make sure they know. Yeah, it's only fair.
All right. Thank you. Super tense notes, Dr. Rivers.
Two quick items. Emergency school closing. Just a reminder how we proceed regarding any of the key days. A decision I tried to make, if possible, last year, it was possible sadly, the night before because it was cold and so it's not. But the goal is to make that decision before the bus will leave, well before the bus will leave the barn. And the first push thing that is made is unpleasant. So we, principals have done a great job of trying to communicate to parents, please don't watch the TV waiting for us to scroll. And you have to begin a cup of coffee, turn away, and you see us, and you're not sure to scroll to what's on. We'll post whether or not we are closed for that day. And then we handle the calling treat the staff, et cetera. So we made that change last year. It seemed to work well, so the parents can make plans because many of our parents are working. It does create some challenges to receive that notice too late even in the morning. So we'll continue to work on this. We'll hope that this will cooperate and that we could, the kind of information that we need and hopefully want to execute this, but...
Are we going to have to expand our band with our website so that we can, the smartphone doesn't crash? You're going to say, open that school in session?
I wouldn't update them more at a few times, but the answer is no right now. We, we'll say, we have discovered that our students have a lot of differences.
Yes, they do.
They have a lot of differences. And then the next item, just in preparation for next one, because we have a committee whole meeting, is the next piece of conversation regarding responsible members of the Golden Community pertaining to the mission. When I'm reviewing this and trying to, trying to go online, what does this statement mean to us? And again, that's the goal of this conversation regarding our mission. Rather than having multiple interpretations of responsible members of the Golden Community and everyone decide how to implement that or accomplish that in their own way, we try to give some guidance in terms of what it means to us. So I tee off on the issue of responsibility. The expectation being that if someone can't be responsible locally, how can they be responsible locally? Regionally, statewide, nationally, locally. So I try to, try to draw on some thoughts relative to responsibility. And I'll just read this, just so that you know. The goal is not to have a conversation tonight, but if you wouldn't mind forwarding any thoughts that you might have to me before the committee whole meeting would be great. If you'd like to bring them to the conversation, that's fine as well. The goal is we'll allocate some time for conversation and be able to talk about this. But what we're, what we could be saying, this is again a draft form, intended to draft form. Each student will show high regard for the dignity of oneself, others' property and the environment. And each student believes he or she has exceptional value. That's what responsibility could mean to us. The goal of allowing every student to believe us, where they know down to their toes that they have exceptional values and they really don't look to their peers to confirm that, where they don't wait until they hit college and try to find a group to affirm that, that they know that at age of eighteen. Again, there's some adults that probably struggle with that still. And that every student will know and show high regard for the dignity of themselves. Once they can show dignity for themselves, it's a whole lot easier to extend that to others. Showing dignity in oneself, others' property, students will demonstrate civil courteous behavior. And again, as we've had conversations, this is not implying in any way, shape or form that this is not happening today. This is just trying to define what does that mean to us, what's responsible mean. And we're, fortunately, we have a lot of evidence. We get pointed and say, we see that these things already. And that's when we can say, that's fabulous. We're well down the road in terms of trying to pursue our mission. Demonstrate civil courteous behavior, respect the same from others, students honor differences and opinions and ways of thinking. Students communicate respectfully, recognize disagreement as natural and not personal.
Oh, would that be a life skill?
Yeah. Student believes he or she has exceptional values, evidenced by, students identify strengths, their strengths. They describe their accomplishments. They acknowledge their weaknesses and work toward improvement. Students recognize their voice and that their contributions make a difference. Students accept responsibility for their own success. Students identify setbacks as temporary and plan for better results in the future. Again, this is draft form. I would like to, because I've been reading it recently, it's about 250-page report from the American Youth Policy Forum, trying to identify what do students need in order to be successful career college ready? Let me just read some of the points that we talked about already, but also aren't incorporated until we just review. The foundation for learning growth, according to the researches out there, that indicates what's necessary for students to be successful. On the knowledge, skills and abilities, academic success behaviors, communication skills, problem-solving skills, critical thinking, social skills and teamwork, goal setting, self-advocacy skills, resilience, self-esteem, motivation, independence, personal and civic responsibility. My suggestion is maybe our mission is actually touching a lot of these points, and that's the goal. That whatever we come up with, in terms of explaining what these terms mean for us, that they really do align with the real-world application of what students will experience so that they will have the requisite skills to be incredibly successful in whatever it seems to do. So, you know, when I found this, I was grateful that a lot of this terminology and the ideas certainly seems to have a lot of alignment. So again, we're going to talk about this at the January committee of the whole. Any suggestions you have, and we'll drill down on this in earnest next month.
John, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but if it would be possible to have you send me a copy of what you just read, I would really appreciate that.
I'll be happy to do that. I'll send it to the board.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And that concludes the super tense.
Very own one from the public that wishes to speak. Do you want it all? All right. We are going to adjourn into executive session where it's anticipated that we will consider mentioning that the social, or personnel history or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or investigation targeted against a specific person, which if discussed in public would likely just substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person or person such history or data involved in such problems or investigations pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851 Act. Number two will consider evaluation data to say personnel issues of employees or the school board exercise responsibility, which if discussed in public would have an adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to in such consideration pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851 Act and 19.851 C. And we also approve executive session minutes of November 19, 2014. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move it. I'd be happy to close executive session. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries the matter into session. Thank you everyone.